All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is February 8th, 2018. It's 2:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. We're in the Strain Community Room of the DALL Student Center located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas. And we have a quorum present. And the first item on the agenda is called Order, invocation, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Baker, would you give the invocation and the pledge of allegiance? Lead us in that.
You bet, I will. Please bow with me. God, we're thankful for you today. We're thankful for the beautiful weather you've given us today, for all the students that are on our campus and all of our campuses. We're thankful that you provided so many great things for this college. Thank you for our board. Please be with them as they deliberate. Please protect our students, and we thank you for this day. In your name we pray. Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. We've got a good group here today. I think probably most of you are here because you want to be, not because you need to be. Isn't that right? The first, second item on the agenda is open forum for individuals not on the agenda. Do we have anyone signed up? Thank you. So we'll go to item three, Presence Report. Mr. Baker, recognition, spring enrollment update, and employees' notices.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank all the employees and students who were in this room, who participated in sessions with Dr. Raymond Paredes, of course, the Texas Commissioner of Higher Education that was here last Monday. This was Dr. Paredes' first ever visit to Weatherford College. And in our debriefing session later that afternoon, he told me it was a very worthwhile visit with some very excellent conversations. So thank you to everyone that was able to make that. This must be the month of benchmark victories for athletic teams. Since our last meeting, softball coach Haley Williams, she won her 200th game as a head coach. Men's basketball coach Marco Cena won his 400th game as a head coach. And women's basketball coach and athletic director Bob McKinley hit win number 900. Of course, Coach McKinley is the winningest two-year basketball coach in the nation, and we congratulate him and Coach Cena and Coach Williams as well. I would like to recognize a group of people that have been meeting for about 18 months working to select a new ERP system. You've heard about this in these meetings, Enterprise Resource Planning. It's the massive computer system that runs everything. Runs our financials, it runs student records, it runs our classes, business office, et cetera. This committee is close to the finish line. I'd like to thank this nine-member committee. I won't read all nine names, but Greg Schrader is the leader of that. I believe Greg's in the room today. Greg, thank you and your committee for a job well done, hours and hours of work. And like I said, they're almost at the finish line there. It's time for an enrollment report. We have great news today. I'm going to hand it off to Adam Finley. Adam?
Yes, sir. This fall, Weatherford College set a record fall enrollment surpassing 6,000 students. This spring, Weatherford College set a record spring enrollment. As a count date, college-wide student headcount is 5,896. This represents a 5.5% year-to-year increase in headcount and a 5.1% in contact hours. As with the fall semester increase, two areas saw the greatest increases, including dual credit and online instruction. Dual credit student population increased 23.4% compared to last spring. 1,768 students are currently classified as early admissions. Online student population increased 12.3% year-to-year. 2,189 students are currently taking online courses. Campuses and education centers saw decreases and increases compared to last spring. Weatherford campus student headcount decreased 2.2% for a total student population of 2,697 students. Wise County campus student headcounts increased 3.8%, total student population 554. Nurewels Education Center, the student headcount decreased 7.8%, total student population 94. The Grandberry Education Center, the student headcount increased 3.7% to a total population of 281. Some interesting spring statistics. Fall to spring student retention rate is 76%. This number is comparable to previous fall to spring rates, and is a raw number not taking into account completions or transfers during the fall terms. Our primary age increases are under age of 18 and 18 to 20. Students classified as developmental or needing remedial education decreased 7%, which means more students are classified as college-ready as defined by the state. Students pursuing academic or transfer-intended courses increased 7%. And lastly, our Hispanic population increased 9% compared to the previous spring semester. This concludes my report.
Give any questions for Adam? Put him on the hot seat a little bit. Only good news from Adam. I like that. Thank you, sir. As you know, policy requires us to notify the board of any contractual employees who have retired or resigned. Dr. Jim Cato, an instructor in our associate degree nursing program, has announced his retirement at the end of the semester. And mathematics instructor Tristan Moran will be leaving us at the end of the semester to pursue other opportunities in another state. And so we wish Dr. Cato and Mr. Moran the best. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Item four on the agenda, consent, agenda items and financial reports. A, approval of minutes from January 11, 2018 board meeting. B, financial reports ending December 31, 2017, and January 31, 2018. C, authorization of administration to enter into a master lease agreement with Flair Data Systems, Inc. under the Cisco Master Lease Agreement. Those are all consent item matters, and I make a motion that they be approved.
I'll second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Item five, consideration possible action, TASB Policy Service Update 33. That would be for Relinda.
There are just nine policies, local policies, in this update for you all today. The main thing in two of the policies, in DIAA and FFDA, the colleges must provide students and employees the option to electronically report an allegation of sexual harassment or assault, dating violence, or stalking. And this option must also allow for anonymous reporting that must be accessible on the college's website. So Mr. Finley worked with the Web Services Team prior to the holiday in December and got the electronic version of that submission available before January 1, which the law required it to be up and running by January 1, so.
Was that the 500 pages that I started to download? And then I thought, no, I'm not pushing the copy button. Is that? Yeah, okay.
So that, he got that up and running, so we're good. And the rest of the changes are just minor changes, you know, some clarifications within the policies and moving some verbiage from one policy to another policy, so they're just very minor. So the changes in Update 33 are, if I can, we're just ready for you. Your approval.
I have a question. I went to the one about the testing center, of course. And actually, that policy is obsolete. So I'm wondering why TASB even still has the policy and why they're making an addition to it. Because in, prior to January 1, 2014, TEA did oversee the GED testing, and they directed had policies and procedures that we had to follow, and we did explicitly. It was very, very strict. But on January 1 of 2014, the GED test, which was still called GED at that time, went completely computer-based. And the sole vendor for the state of Texas was Pearson View. And so at that point, we had to go by Pearson's rules and regulations, which are also very strict, but very different from TEA because we didn't have booklets anymore. These were based on keeping booklets. And so after that point, we were going by Pearson View. Well, then in 2016, the State Board of Education voted to have two more vendors for the GED test, and they changed the name to the Texas High School Certificate of High School Equivalency, which is called Tech Chase. And at that point, we didn't have still Pearson, but I asked Gwen to come because in, last year, she did go ahead and take on one of the other vendors, so we'd have paper testing available if anyone needed it. So Gwen, do you have any, did I?
That's, I mean, all of the contracts are through the vendors to TEA. We don't have contract with them anymore. It's all, everything's done through the vendors. They don't even counter us. They register through them, they pay them, they don't pay us, so.
So what in here do we need to?
Well, I was asking Craig, our, my TASB friend, and I knew that, you know, they have so many umbrellas at TASB that they wouldn't have anything to do with policies. But he said what we might do is have a review of our policy. I don't know the answer to that. I just know we don't need that policy any longer. And I can't imagine why they made an addition to it when it's an obsolete policy. Because TEA does not oversee Tech Chase testing. They keep the records. Is that right, Gwen?
They're booked through them and.
They keep the records. They're the agency that has all the records for high school equivalency, but they do not oversee the testing.
And I can get with our policy consultant. That's no, that's no problem at all.
Okay. What do we do today as far as approving everything but that one?
Well, this is an action item, and so I think what they're asking us to do is to approve the updates, not the entire policy. Am I right?
Well, it's the nine, it's the nine policies, and that one is one of the nine, so you can approve everything but that, if that's what you all choose. Or you can approve it, and then later on, if we don't, if we find out we really don't need it, we can ask them to.
Okay. Well, that's what I would like, because right now, we have a policy in our policy manual that is obsolete.
Okay.
Well, I guess a point of order, Mr. Curly, I mean, or maybe it's Mr. Baker, we probably need to address the issue about whether this is an obsolete policy and go through that process. Talk to me about what are the mechanics about that at this point with this being raised.
Well, like Relinda said, we could, we go to our TASB representative that consults with us on our policy and talk to them about the concerns and come back to you. My recommendation would be that you pass the eight other updates and leave that one and let us come back to you after we do a little investigating.
Okay.
Which number is that particular policy? I don't recall. I looked it up.
EFCD.
It's EFCD.
It's what?
It's not numbered.
EFCD.
EFCD. EFCD.
Oh, yeah. That's at the top. Could you have some?
Well, I just know, you know, most of our local policies are to agree with the legal policies. And so even though we have to outsource to someone else in signing a contract or whatever, we might need to review to make sure that they still abide by the legal policy. I'm not familiar with this one, but that might be.
Yeah, but see, that's just it. We don't do these policies. That's not the way the testing center runs anymore. But so I think it's.
We're still responsible for.
Yeah, I'm concerned that if we leave this policy out, where do we stand legally? And so I guess I'd ask Mr. Curly what your opinion is about it. Looks like we need a policy in effect, even though.
Yes, and I think that having that policy is an issue whenever you don't follow it. So I think that probably an inquiry into what is in that effect and also to compare it with the legal one, to make sure they're consistent with one another.
I guess my point of order here would be that it looks to me like we need to pass all of the policies and then look into changing that policy. I don't want to, not to take issue with what you said, it's not that I want to have an obsolete policy here, but there probably need, it probably needs to be studied more than, than just a little bit of discussion we're having right now. So with that, with that, Dr. Marled, you understand, I'm sure you're an expert on this too.
Oh, boy. No, I'm not, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so with that in mind, what else do you have on your report?
That's it.
Okay. Any other, any other comments you want to make?
No, so you just.
Anybody else have any other comments they want to make? Okay, all right.
So you want all of them?
Well, I, you know, to me, I think you need to, I don't want to get into the, to a real big discussion on this because you know a lot more about these matters on that particular issue than we do, but at the same time, I don't want to leave us without a policy in effect. And so I, what I recommend, and I guess I'll make the motion, is that we approve the presentation and the policies that we have on the agenda for possible action with the understanding that we need to go back and revisit that particular policy that's been brought up for discussion now.
I think that would.
Is that okay? That's my motion?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is consideration possible action, disposal of obsolete and surplus items through e-waste recycling.
We're required a lot of time to you all for, to dispose of any property at the college. So we do have a group of items that are here that evidently are no longer useful to the college, and we go through an auction group to dispose of these. And so we're asking at this time for authorization to dispose of obsolete surplus items just presented.
All right.
In the future, probably, I mentioned, Teresa, I may go ahead and put these under consent items in the future, and then if there's anything you all see that you would call question to, you can call attention to it.
I think that's a good idea. If there's any discussion about that, we can have that. Set motion to approve this?
I shall move.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
I'll second.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Number seven is reports. This will be Dr. Cantrell. A, 2018-19 Tuition and Fees Report. And we'll move through them as, in segments on it.
The Tuition and Fee Advisory Committee has been meeting since the fall, probably since about November, December, and that's a cross-sectional group from across the college that comes together with recommendations for fees. They look at tuition, they look at multiple, anything that we charge for here at the college, so just lab fees, whatever. They, they looked at surveys of current and projected tuition and fee charges of other community colleges in the state. And right now, we're reviewing what their recommendation, they're recommending that we go ahead and increase 6%, which would bring the industry to $85 per semester credit hour. And the, let's see, the out-of-district 124, the out-of-district wise would be 98, the out-of-district ECG 115, and out-of-state 176. Our reasoning behind this and looking at it, and as they looked at it, we have an increased tuition in the last four years. And since that time, at that time, we had an internal policy, basically, that we were trying to stay with the state average. But like, that was a good place, middle of the road to be with a medium-sized college that we have. And so that was $80 an hour in 2014. Since that time, we're, it's at, for this spring semester, it has gone to $80 to $89 for the spring semester. And looking back what it normally does, the spring semester by the fall, when, because we have to set tuitions very early, earlier than anyone else, it would probably be projected to go to at least $92. And so we'll be, if we stay at $80, we're $12 behind. In all realization, you know, when I'm, I was visiting with Becky, she's the chairman of the committee, or leads the committee, and she came to me, I said, we can't go, probably $12 an hour, $12.50 an hour at one time. And so we talked about, she went back to the committee, and they're talking about recommending a 6% increase, which would increase at $5 at this time, across the board, I believe. No, not across the board, just 6%. It would go to, the difference would be $5 for in district, out-of-district $8, out-of-district wise $6, out-of-district ECG $7, and out-of-state would increase $11, to try to work toward that average, but just in one year. In light of all the efforts that we're trying to move forward this year, we just feel like it prudent to, to look at an increase, and it seemed across the board that everyone was recommending that. We've got some of the projects that we know we've got going, the ERP and the software, professional development initiatives that we're wanting to add, the guided pathways initiatives that we'll talk to you later today about, and the needed personnel and possibly salary study that we're planning on doing. So we just feel like it's almost out of it that we go ahead and increase at this time. So with that in mind, there's no recommendation. Final recommendation today, we'll come back after studying it a little bit further and recommend in March to you all. But if you have questions and want us to look at anything, we'd be more than glad to do so.
Do you feel like that we've had a pretty in-depth consideration on, on, on the raise that we would be looking at? I mean, I know you've been studying it for quite a while.
The raise in the tuition.
Tuition raise, yeah.
Yes, we've, we've looked at it a good while, and we know right now, it's very difficult, especially with the current ERP system, to see, see what that will bring us net, because we have so many with our dual credit that are paying different dollars, and you can't do it just across the board now. We're looking at a gross bringing in additional $750,000, that there could be a possible $300 offset to that, too. So at this time, that's one of the things that we wanted to go into a little bit deeper back before we come back to you with a final recommendation.
Okay. When do you have in mind that we, we need to consider an action item on this?
In March.
In March?
Because we, I have to start registering in early April, in the March, early April.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have one. What's the comparison made by, I mean, by other colleges, our size, Texas?
Our size? I haven't broken down. I can, I can tell you, I can pick out some of these medium-sized colleges right now. McLennan, $115 an hour. You've got, well, Cisco's close to us, they're probably smaller than, they're considered medium small. Cisco is at 98. Odessa, $87.
What's Ranger?
Ranger, you are looking at $88.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're well below, you know, we're, now, Tarrant, on the other, in the other direction, is $59.
Where's this?
Tarrant County. If they have such a.
They got a tremendous base over there.
We know we've been competing the same.
We need Robin Hood at our level.
But for any medium, and that's one thing that I was wanting to look at a little bit closer, and maybe I'll, I'll send this out to you or the next board meeting, what we do about the medium-sized colleges.
I blame the average that Dr. Cantrell gave, was all 50 college districts averaged out.
Averaged out, and it was what?
All 50 community colleges.
What was the number?
The state average. It's 89 for in district, 142 for out-of-district, and 198 for non-resident. Now, they don't have, for us to compare with, they don't have like the branch campus maintenance tax, because we have different fees or tuition rates for each of those, depending on their contribution.
Is that all going to be in the study, all those considerations that you're mentioning? Are they going to be in the study?
Certainly.
Okay.
Where's Collin and Vernon?
Collin is at, well, about $46, $88 out-of-district, and $149 out-of-state.
Collin, yes?
Yes. Vernon is at $100 in district, $145 out-of-district, and $210 out-of-state.
Collin has a massive tax base, too.
Yeah. I want to.
Yeah.
Grayson, as Mike said, comparable to us would be Grayson, and $83, $121, $167.
CTC.
North Central, no, not North Central, North Texas. Okay, $85 and $150, so we would be right. If we raised, we would be right. They will, I will almost bet you, they will be raising it, too, for the coming year.
Any other questions?
Well, those are, well, those are all interesting numbers, and they're just numbers, and have very little to do with the administration and the efficiency of any college. And so, but I just, I wonder, rather than talking about keeping up with the average, which I'm not saying you did, I'm just saying that comes to my mind, keeping up with the averages. And those things, in the spirit of 60 by 30, trying to reduce student expenses to get more kids involved, and kids of any age, students of any age, I just would encourage that be as strictly as need-based as you can possibly make it.
I will say, our budgets over the last several years have been pretty well, supplies, travel, reduced to a minimum.
And I want to see the staff and faculty get some raises. I really want to see that.
Amen.
Thank you. I understand affordability, but I think the way they're trying to do it in very incremental, staying below the average is a good thing, but we really need to think about our infrastructure and our, and our faculty, too, because we got to have good, good staff to get good kids.
We have to put off some of these things for this fall, this ERP system and some of the others, because the dollars were not there.
That's part of your need, that's part of the needs.
That's right.
And so they may be considered according.
But we have, we have extensive scholarship opportunities, project opportunity, you know, particularly for the needy students, which, you know, the ones, they're the ones we're reaching out to strongly with 60 by 30. So there is that as a positive, you know, to overbalance the fact that it's going to cost more money to go to college.
We were about to introduce the guided pathways, but one of the examples in there that I look at is that, and Dr. Paredes, when he was here a couple of weeks ago, pointed out that we're doing a good job on the number of years to an associate degree. We're at 4.1 as compared to the national average of six.
It's a huge savings.
Years to them.
Huge savings.
And so that's good. But he also pointed out, on the other hand, that we are 86 semester credit hours to completion, and we've got to cut that down. So when we cut down the number of classes and the number of hours, that's going to be a savings in there. So that's what we've got to work toward, is reducing, going back and strictly aligning these pathways to a degree, to get these students registered, I mean, get them graduated and out of here or transferred onto the next level. So that's what we've got, work we've got cut out for us. And that's, to me, how we're going to save our, to go back and reduce to necessary dollars there.
Any other comments? Thank you. B, Guided Pathways Report.
Guide, guide for, for. Now, the Guided Pathways Leadership Team would like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you today and discuss with you the very important work that we here at Weatherford College are embarking upon. I personally would like to thank you for the opportunity that I've had to facilitate and support the attendance of the leadership team at the Third Annual Guided Pathways Institute. and support the attendance of the leadership team at the Third Annual Guided Pathways Institute, and I look forward to many more to come. I might explain right here that the Guided Pathways Institute are funded by philanthropical organizations, and they are paying for seven members to come to each institute. We'll have another one in two or three months coming up, that I just found out about yesterday, but they're a fabulous institute. They have brought outstanding speakers from across the country to us. This was the third annual, we hadn't been to one before, but there's been three others, and they have done lots of work across the country. It's based on the American Association of Community Colleges Guided Pathways Plan, and it's to streamline and to support the strategic plan of the state. And so it's very important, but I did want to point out that seven of our members went free of charge to Weatherford College for three days down to San Antonio, Texas, and we appreciate that very much. The leadership team recognizes that with every strategic plan, that the work will start at the top, and that is why we're coming to you all today for your support. We also realize that this project will involve every faculty and staff member of the colleges over the coming years to produce student success. To get started, I would like to introduce the guided pathways team at this time. If you all would please stand. That's one of the reasons we have a big audience today. They've done a tremendous amount of work. We took twelve to the institute, we were a little bit behind in past attendance, so the college did pay for five more over the seven to go this time. I look in the future, we'll send seven every time, I think, and they will pay for them This group is a very methodical group of individuals, representing a cross-sectional representation of deans, faculty, staff, and administrative leadership, as recognized and recommended by the Texas Success Team under the auspices of the TACC. This team will be expanded over time. We've been meeting monthly, or maybe more than that, some months we've met twice, to talk about where we are here at Weatherford College and what we're going to need to move this guided pathways along at a faster pace than what we've been doing in the past. We also will be bringing experts in critical fields on board over time to advise us here in the work that we're doing. We also would like, at some point, hopefully we're discussing the timing on it, to bring some leadership here to introduce the whole plan to the, the full body here at the college. And we felt very lucky and to have the opportunity to go down there and hear this and to get excited, and like others were, and the work that they've been doing in the last three years, and so we would like for that same excitement to spread across campus, and we thought that was one way of doing it. But we'll be getting back with you on that. This type of transform, the things that we learned down there, I think would, all of us could say across the board, that this type of transformational change will evolve over time by working among ourselves and with other colleges. The work that many of the other colleges have already completed will provide a framework only to assist us. I know that they're always saying, "That doesn't work for us," or whatever. Well, this is, we will be able to pick and choose what is best for Weatherford College. It only provides all the other institutions, and what they've done only provides a framework that we can pick from, that what best fits Weatherford College. We also learned that here at Weatherford College, that we have worked far too long in silos. We've realized during the institute, sitting at a round table with each other, we didn't really know what each other was doing. And many times, someone would speak up and say, "Well, we already do that." But that's one of the things that we've got to start doing here, is to working with each other, and I think it's very important and brought out, and I know Adam and Alex and Jeanette will be talking later about how important it is for the advising group and the academic group to be working together to help these students. Another point that would be brought out, I think, is that even, even the financial affairs area, we've got to figure out a better way, a cheaper way of educating these students. So, we have a role to play in this also. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review the board packet concerning the guided pathways project, and some of you have, may have even read a redesigning America Community Colleges, the book that we passed out last fall to you. And hopefully, you're already familiar with that. But moving on, I'll, I'll give you just a little background, and I have mentioned some of this already. Over the last ten years, the results were that a thousand two hundred community colleges in the U.S. enroll over ten million students each year. Fewer than forty percent of these students complete an undergraduate degree within six years, and that has been deemed unacceptable across the nation at this time for accountability. The Texas Success Center was designed to support the Texas Community Colleges after the adoption of performance-based funding initiative to design and implement a structured academic and career pathways. The project was intentionally designed to dramatically contribute to the State of Texas Strategic Plan, Sixty by Thirty TX, that many of the board members went to a meeting in the end of November, December, and are very aware of. Texas Community Colleges believe the rates of student success can be substantially increased by rethinking the ways in which we organize programs of study, support services, and instruction. I was going to bring out here with Dr. Paredes what he had pointed out about our semester credit hours, a number that needed to be reduced. But I will say, at this time, we here at Weatherford Community College, we believe that the rates of student success can be substantially increased by rethinking the way in which we organize our programs of study, support services, and instruction. A little bit of overview of the guided pathways, it's an approach to redesign educational programs and support services to clearly create structured, educationally coherent program pathways. It's an initiative to work with educational providers at all levels, and with employers to ensure that program learning outcomes are clearly aligned with the requirements for success in further education and degrees and careers. That's one thing that we pointed out, we needed, need to begin with the end in mind, and where these students are going and are they going to be put to work. Key features are degree maps, meta-majors, predictable schedules, integrated instruction and foundation skills, progress tracking and bridges to college programs. Now, I would like to hand the podium over to Adam Finley, and he will further explain the guided pathways and discuss the work that's being done here at the college in his area.
Thank you, Dr. Cantrell. When we first started discussing guided pathways, I remember thinking of all the different initiatives at the state and national level, titled pathways. It seemed to be the new buzzword in education, and because of this, it was difficult to know exactly what was being proposed, or rather, why we should commit to making this a reality at Weatherford College. But after research and attending the pathways conference, the practical applications became evident. The goal is to create an integrated, system-wide approach to student success based on intentionally-designed and structured educational experiences. So, on a practical level, what does this mean? In advising, it means moving beyond student intake and registration, which is easy to say in February, a little harder to say in January and August. But this is why we have to rethink our model. We need to rely on a structured plan that incorporates campus-wide support for advising. This serves our, our students better, but it also provides the needed assistance for our advisors and support staff to give above and beyond, especially in the months prior to the start of a semester. Our current model, listed on the left, admittedly highlights our negatives. There are positives within our current model, but where we struggle is addressing the needs of an undecided student, establishing critical milestones within a program of study, and properly assessing incoming students' needs. An undecided student is recognized by the statement we hear so often, "I'm here to complete my basics." The core curriculum, or basics, is a valuable tool to assist students in transferring credit to a four-year institution. However, it is a poor advising tool, and does little to ensure students are taking the correct classes for their major. The guided pathways model listed on the right provides the additional structure, which is intended to promote student success and limit excess credits. A guided pathways approach not only maps each program to a career or advanced study, but it provides the critical milestones within each program to a career or advanced study. It also provides the critical milestones within the program, and which these milestones essentially measure for a student, or ensure they are progressing through the program appropriately. Think of them as checkpoints. These checkpoints allow advisors to assess students turn by turn and make appropriate intervention when necessary. Checkpoints could include visiting with a faculty advisor, completing fifteen hours of credit, to petitioning for graduation. Lastly, a guided pathways approach makes student assessment critical. Needs assessments for incoming students will have a huge impact on advising services. An appropriate needs assessment would measure what skills have, what they need, and how to deliver the right support for each student. So, our next steps as far as moving to a guided pathways approach is currently, a team has been selected to focus on enhancing specific advising initiatives. This is a subcommittee from the guided pathways team. And their task is to establish clear roles for faculty in the area of guidance and mentoring, create specific milestones or checkpoints within each pathway, and develop consistent advising literature for each of the meta-majors or pathways created. Secondly, this team is exploring the need for an advising center that will allow for a centralized location for mentoring, advising, career exploration, and transfer services. In essence, expand our career and transfer center. We are looking at multiple options, but a good fit currently seems to be merging the welcome and the career and transfer center into a single location within the academic building. Again, this is currently being proposed and will need formal approval. Lastly, this team will research and hopefully implement technology that will assist with incorporating a needs assessment for incoming students, and create a platform that will allow students to visually monitor their critical milestones as they progress through their pathway. Now, I'll turn it now over to Dr. May.
Thank you. One of the things about the whole process, guided pathway, guided pathway is going to be transformational, it's going to be evolutionary, and it's going to increase collaboration across the board, across the whole campus, and it's going to eliminate redundancy. So, that being said, what we have, I, I'm not going to repeat every other thing that Dr. Cantrell and Adam has said, but what we have in the current model, what we do, we do have programs of study that are not well-defined, which we are going to work on, instructional faculty members not actively engaged with advising, so we want to get them involved, and then of course, assessment that we currently do, we have a very robust assessment measures, but they only test student's success on completion, but we are going to change all those things. So, with the guided pathway, we are going to create meta-majors, and these meta-majors will come from existing department programs that we have. Say, for example, we have life sciences, physical sciences, mathematics, we combine them as the meta-major, STEM major, and then we can bring in social and behavioral sciences as one major. And within each meta-majors, you will have several fields of studies, and those fields of studies are being mapped out aggressively by the co-board right now. So, what the, what the field of studies are saying to us is just, they are showing us how to choose courses that are approved to be transferred to four-year institutions. Say, for example, in psychology, they, they give us courses in psychology, say, these are the courses that you can offer to be able to be transferred. Then we take those courses, we map them out into four semesters, and within those four semesters, we will create slates, or block of courses, that we offer our students on a full-time basis. So, that will take us to our target. Who are our target? Our target for this guided pathway is everyone, however, is going to be primarily full-time students, first-generation, post-students, and that means, that's why I said, we are going to evolve in what we do, to be able to achieve all those goals. So, when we bring in these students here, within three years, they can complete and transfer out of here seamlessly to a four-year institution and continue their studies. And those of them in the workforce area can also complete their workforce program with marketable skills that can get them a job upon completion at Weatherford College. That's what the, the whole program is all about. And then, of course, the assessment, again, the assessment will address program outcomes as we already do, and of course, the acquired career skills, again, marketable skills. When a student is completing every course or, or program, we want to make sure we define what acquired skills, and how can, can they articulate those skills in the marketplace? So, those are the things that the guided pathway is all about. They want us to achieve all these, which are achievable. And then, the next question would be, how do we get there from where we are right now? We have to hold multiple workshops for our faculty members and advisory staff. We are going to start in a very small size, maybe bring in few faculty members at a time with advisory, staff members, and they have workshop, maybe five, six hours workshop on a Friday, we feed them lunch, and, and then they brainstorm all day and come up with something. We are going to move very fast in this area, in the area of the academics or career. We are moving very fast. We are going to have them talk, then when they come up with some platforms, then we add more faculty members into the equation, and then gradually, we morph out and begin to bring, bring in other staff members, maybe in the area of purchasing, in the area of our media, they are going to be part of this, because it's going to be a wide campus effort. And so, the, the difficulty of the whole guided pathway is going to be the logistics, and that is where, why we have, we need the blessing of the Board of Trustees, and we're also going to need money. Okay? And we need money, and it's a good thing, Dr. Cantrell is leading this pack. So, anyways, that being said, then of course, this year will be pilot, a few programs at a time. It is, we do not have a timeline. We are not going to say two years, three years, or four years. It's just that we come up with few of them, we pilot them, and I see how successful they are, we add more, we add more until we, we arrive at where we are going. Is it possible? Yes. Is doable? Yes. Are we going to do it? Yes. And what, what do we need? Your blessing. Thank you. My, my colleague, Ed, Ed, I can't place it.
Thank you for allowing us to visit with you today. I'm here to represent all of the workforce and technical programs here at the college. The career pathways concept's not new to workforce. We've been training, and our purpose and mission of all of our workforce programs have been to lead to certificates, credentials, and jobs. We do that very well, but we all know we have room for improvement. We currently offer our programs in business, cosmetology, healthcare, industrial, public safety, transportation, and many technical build-credit programs with the area high schools. We do a great job with these programs, and we definitely have pockets of excellence all across this institution, but we have realized that we have limited collaboration among our departments and other departments and programs to provide a clear, seamless pathway for all students in all areas. Most of the time, our... Most of the time, our advising is limited to just technical programs within our departments and usually separated out by credit and non-credit programs. Adam's already spoke to the need for holistic advising for the entire college. Also, most of our support services for students and faculty are separated as well. So with the guided pathways initiative, we plan to work on creating even better mapping for career pathways, including visuals and checklist plans for students, including how general education and workforce education can work together. Many of the workforce programs already have multiple entry points and exit points, and they're also stepping stones for students to get to the next level. We plan to make sure to clearly define all of those entry and exit points and also show the success students can have across many disciplines at the college. We have strong partnerships with industry, school districts, workforce boards, but we definitely plan to increase those and build those even stronger. As we transition to the career pathways, we plan to do more collaboration and awareness of not only careers and the workforce, but all the departments to determine what courses and programs can work together and where we can lead our concise pathways to further education and careers for our students. We are definitely aware that we've duplicated efforts throughout the college, and we plan to bring that together with more efficient and provide even better programs and services to students and faculty. I stated earlier, this concept's not new. What is new and different about this time is it's with the entire college, and we also have the inclusion of the state and national level of importance that Dr. Cantrell mentioned. Therefore, it's critical for the success of this initiative that we all must embrace the initiative. We all have to be willing to evolve. We all have to be willing to make the necessary changes to help more of our students be successful. The simple message of guided pathways is student success, which is self-sustaining employment. That path for each student will look very, very different, but ultimately, all of our pathways need to lead to jobs. We know we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I know we're definitely excited about this project and initiative and all the possibilities it can bring for success for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Once again, we won't take a lot more of your time. If there are any questions you have at this point in time, we'd like to entertain those.
Well, I think this is just wonderful. This has been needed for a long, long time and I support it completely. My question would be, has anything, I know y'all are meeting as a group, but has anything started being put out to the campus family?
That's where we are right now, just in those planning stages to get it out. I was going to tell you all, you all at the community college trustees meeting in June, more of this will be put in your lap about guided pathways. I know that's part of the, will be on the agenda. But what we plan here, we will bring everyone and anyone, anyone is invited right now to the meetings that we're having. Not all, 18 of the people that we listed up here have been able to come, but they're invited because we've considered them very strategic. But before this is all over, there will be different committees, and we are planning, I mentioned, to bring a speaker that, possibly one that we heard at the institution here that will be able to bring everyone on board and excite the team, just like we've been. But it's a great thing. I've been watching this for two or three years at TSCC meetings and knew the other colleges that were involved in it already, attended the other three institutes, and I was excited and definitely wanted to bring this to Weatherford College, that we don't need to miss out. We've been doing bits and pieces of it, but we haven't put it all together, and that's what we want to do.
What are the other institutes that are already involved?
The other institutes or the other institutions? There are, last summer, when I first was on this, there was 36 community colleges that were involved. They're all sizes, all, but by the time we got to the institute in November, I had spoken with Cynthia Farrell in the summer and told her, I assured I wanted to bring Weatherford College or bring it back to Weatherford College and introduce it. I went to cabinet with it, and we decided it was something we needed to do. And so, by November '46 had come up of the 50 community college, and it wouldn't surprise me at this point if all 50 are on board.
Could I just say a few things? I really want to applaud you all. I loved Dr. Ebe because he was really focusing on quality, not quantity.
Yes.
I love that. And I really applaud you all for taking the bull by the horns, you're not letting somebody say, you need to do this, you're saying, we need to do this, and I just, that just makes my heart swell with pride. There's some, she said earlier that there's pockets of excellence, and I would respectfully disagree because I think you all are providing pathways to excellence. I think there's not just isolated pockets, I just see pathways to excellence everywhere on this campus, and I have a very critical eye, as Brett knows, but, and I love the fact too, that she expressed a willingness to evolve, and just in my career and what I've seen, that is the absolute key to success, absolutely the ultimate key to success. And the main thing I took away from what y'all have presented today is you're willing to accept individual, you're not trying to cram everybody into a one-size-fits-all, you're looking at the individual case by case, and I just, I found that very, very encouraging. So thank you all.
Amen.
Thank you.
Well, this all sounds good.
You know what, I cautioned Dr. Ebe because I was reading a book the other night that said, "Don't talk about pilot programs anymore. We are sick of pilot programs." And so, we've got to think of something else. This is not a pilot program. I think this is a pride in ourselves here at Weatherford College that we want to.
Well, maybe, and I don't doubt it. I like the energy of Weatherford College. I just, I've been impressed all the time in the last month or two or three that I've had the opportunity to learn more about Weatherford College. It keeps getting better. This thing you're talking about though, if you've been in education more than 10 years, you've seen a lot of this before, not exactly the same. And so, I keep looking for what makes this different or better. In the military, we have a saying that says, "That that goes unexpected goes neglected." And I didn't hear a lot about evaluation, constant, minute-by-minute evaluation and appraisal, are we doing it right, right now? Not waiting to see how successful a student is down the line, but what is it happening from day, the evaluation from day to day? And to do that, you got to know how, what you're starting from, to know where you are at the moment and where you're going. And so, I would just like to see more of that.
And this is very involved, that's one of the five committees that established institutional research assessment under Lee Butler, that we'll be looking at, so that is one of the parts of this study, and it is one of the, based upon data, is what we will be doing in the future on this program. And, you know, we haven't always operated that way in the past, and we created our own monster, or the state did, we were funded on credit hours before because all it was about was numbers. And if you've read the book, you talk about, we no longer are pushing the cafeteria plan just to sell numbers. It's about quality also.
How do you know?
How do we know?
How will you know, minute by minute?
When we have, well, we may not know. I mean, he's going to show us the numbers.
Yeah.
Got to prove it.
And I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot. It's just a human, human problem. We get involved in the program, and pretty soon, it kind of fades because nobody's really doing the, how are we doing day by day, minute by minute, and so, it tends to fade. This probably won't fade, you know, but.
It's essential.
There are a few benchmarks that we can watch very closely to know if we're doing a good job. One of the numbers that Dr. Cantrell mentioned earlier, that actually Dr. Coretta's mentioned last Monday, was that average number of hours per student. And when that's high compared to 60 hours, that's a bad thing. If you're taking 80, 90 hours to get an associate's degree, that's a bad thing. And so, when that number starts to drop, that's one of the ways we'll know that we're successful, because students will come here, they'll get in, they'll get their hours, and they'll move on to the next level. So those types of benchmarks are what we're going to watch to grade ourselves to know if we're doing this correctly or not.
He also mentioned the business of this, nah, see, I don't know, this program starts earlier than college level or not. I haven't heard of it starting, does it? But the 60 by 30, he mentioned that it should start in kindergarten, and I know, we don't have any, we have very little influence over what they're doing, the ISDs, but, but there can be a lot of encouragement from the communication point of, this is happening, this is what we need out of you at ISD, you know?
And Coretta's talked about the community college or the lynchpin between the ISDs and the universities.
I think that's exactly what.
Well, he asked, what makes this different? And for me, it's different because in the past, I think departments have gone to their conferences, and they come back, and it's never really a campus-wide initiative. This is starting from administration, and all the different departments are working together for the whole college instead of departmentalizing what they've learned at their conferences. So I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, you get rid of that silo mentality, you're going to open up a gateway to.
You should have seen us that first day down there together around that big round table. And we do that, I ran it.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just.
I think that's very.
We won't take more of your time, but we're excited and we'll be touching base with you again.
I'm sorry. I just want to say that those of you who know me know that I've been there, done that a time or two, and it's like Lila said, the English teachers would go and go to our meetings and come back excited, we're going to change this in our little silo, or developmental guys would go, and we'd watch people go to their own conferences and come back, and we'd talk to them about how things are going to change. What I see with this is that the co-board's out there saying, we've got the money, and y'all, everybody knows it, and we're going to be funding this, and you've got philanthropists out there saying, we're going to fund it, because they know they're spending their money where it needs to be spent. And I can tell you that over the years, I remember a student who came so excited, he had just registered, and guess what? He was taking my developmental writing class and four psychology classes, because he loves psychology, and he was going to be a psychologist. And, you know, that was a whole semester of his precious life that he had done, and nobody stopped him. And to me, the key word is guided. I don't think that's going to be happening. He make it, one snuck in because it's required of a psychology class, but he'll be taking the courses he needs to get where he needs to go. And we've really got to do that, and we've got to get faculty involved in advising.
Any other comments?
I just have one more. Will we monitor these students once they complete the programs to see if what we're doing is as good? Okay.
Yes. This is one of the things, this ERP system is so critical to us right now, to get this on board and get moving with it. We're looking at several software packages, one that Lee has brought forward for our assessment, so these things will be critical for us.
Yes, sir.
So thank you for your time, and we're excited.
Thank you for your presentation.
Did you need to say something?
No.
If I can clarify some of the assessment questions, if you would like.
That would be good. Go ahead.
Okay. Currently, Weatherford College assesses the core mandated by the state on a semester-by-semester basis. There are six core competencies. They include communication, critical thinking, empirical and quantitative reasoning, teamwork, social responsibility, and personal responsibility. Last three are a little tricky to get to, but we're working towards it. We aggregate this data, I've got it in a database, I run reports that link the students back to their performance in the classes to try to establish a correlation between how they are doing in their outcomes assessment and how they were doing in their classes. So we have a model for this assessment. We've recently made a change to collect the data through our Canvas LMS that alleviates some of the work on our faculty. They don't have as much that they have to worry about, they just go in and assess the student. We'll know better at the end of this term how we're doing there. So we have a model in place. It may not be minute-by-minute because it doesn't change that quickly, but semester-by-semester, we can evaluate where we're at as far as our performance in the competencies, and that's our students being able to exhibit college-level ability in those six core areas. Now, recently, we've learned that our Southern Association Commission on Colleges are going to require us to get down to specific learning outcomes for programs. So we're going to be integrating the actual material the students are learning per program and the assessment process, so we'll be able to say, not only are these students competent in what the state says they need to be competent in, but they're competent in what they're learning in their courses. So that's our progress moving forward as we build out our assessment plans moving forward into the 2018, 2019 year. So it's just a matter of collecting the data, doing the analysis, and providing the reports back to instructional administration and faculty so they can then take that data and say, well, we're weak in this area, what are we going to do pedagogically and curriculately to address that? So we have a cycle in place, we have a feedback loop that gets data into the hands of faculty over time so that they can do something with it, and that's where we're moving.
I apologize for not knowing this, but do you have anything, any kind of triggers that would identify at-risk students, maybe at midterms?
We have an early alert system, and we're actually looking at expanding that, and it's offered by Dr. Cantrell reference, to link that so that we know more about those students who have a tendency to trend towards early alerts and recognize that they're an at-risk student in terms of what you can anticipate.
Thank you.
Well, anybody else? Thank you very much for that. That's very good.
No problem.
Yeah. And I guess our new computer system will help us even more.
Yes.
To keep up with what you're talking about.
It will. Right now, we, it's kind of an octane process to put all this stuff together, but the new ERP will help us synthesize a lot of the standard multiple.
I know we voted on that, but when is it coming?
The ERP? We will have to come back and vote on it. We've gotten this in, agree?
We're looking at the April meeting.
April. You all did put $500,000 in the budget for this year, but didn't, we're proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? If we've got plenty of time to take, to discuss this more if you'd like. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the 150th anniversary report. Mr. Baker?
Larry, do you mind switching the PowerPoint for me? I got to say, it's great seeing so much enthusiasm from the board on that guided pathways issue. Thank you for your participation. That's wonderful to see that. You're probably ready for a break at this point, so I'm only going to spend about five minutes talking about this, but we're excited about something that, you know, we think about Weatherford College and what makes us unique. One of the things that makes us unique is our history and heritage. Very few people, very few colleges can celebrate 150th anniversary, and so, in the year 2019, we're going to do just that. We have a great committee that's been working on this. Before I move on, I want to introduce Katie Edwards. She's our Director of Creative and Graphic Services. Katie, would you wave there? She is really taken.
She's the one that gave us the shirts?
Yes, she's the one that gave you the shirts. That's how you'll remember her. She's done a tremendous job in leading this effort for, well, really, almost a year now we've been working on plans for the 150th, and Katie has really taken the bull by the horns, and I want to thank her publicly for that. We have a great steering committee that's working on this. Sue is our board member on the committee, and you can see the rest of the folks that are working on this as well. You see one student there, we also have some student focus groups that we're working with as well, so it's not just the one student input. But, so what we decided from the steering committee, and we received input from across the community, we had an online survey, we had meetings with alumni, meetings with faculty and staff, and we felt like we wanted to celebrate over the course of the entire year. So 2019 is the year we turn 150, and so, we have a series of events, and, well, mainly events for that year in 2019 I'm going to tell you about. I'm just going to hit the high points right now. A lot of these are, the details are still in formulation, and we may add some, we may subtract some, but just to give you an idea of what we're talking about. First of all, in January of 2019, we're going to start out with a kickoff reception, probably in the Texas Hall, the Alkec Center, the entire community will come out, and we'll celebrate the beginning of the whole year festivities. We're going to have two student birthday parties here on this campus, one in the fall, one in the spring, and then each of our other campuses will have one as well, birthday cake and the whole nine yards, giveaways, get them excited about being part of our college during the 150th. In the month of February of 19, we're going to have a reception for all current and former board members. Roger Rizard has agreed to chair that, and so, we're going to get that date to you and put that on your calendar and celebrate all the folks who have led this college for these many years. these many years. We're also going to have a historic photo show, gathering up photos from all the history of the 150 years, all sold in the Alkec Fine Arts Center. And then we're going to talk to the basketball, the athletic department, the basketball coaches about a reunion of our basketball teams through the years to be a part of that February as well, because that's in the middle of their conference season and a real big time for the basketball team. In March, once baseball and softball start, we'll have a family picnic that will occur around one of the dates they share, a lot of Saturdays that they're both playing. In April, we always have our alumni awards, but this will be a special year for that, and we'll include a Class of 1969 reunion, which is the first class to come on this campus, actually. So that works out really well time-wise. In May, we plan on having some nostalgic movie nights. Mike Handy is working on that for us right now. Blown Some Dub has been mentioned. It's one of the, one of the perfect movies for this event, for the students and for the entire community. And the city of Weatherford is also looking at partnering with us on this particular event. In the month of August, another fall, another birthday party for the students that just come on campus. This is neat. In October, we're going to have Pioneer Week. 50 years ago, the college celebrating its centennial had Pioneer Week, made activities all week, harkening back to the 1860s when the college started. We're going to do that again, and we've had several folks like Merlin Coleman, who were here in 1969, to talk about what they did and piggyback off of that. And the DOS Heritage and Culture Center is going to be a partner with us as well on Pioneer Week. Family picnic in November, that'll probably be the day of the coyote chase race. And then in December, we're working on a closing event, and we'd like to bury a time capsule at that time as well, to be open some, I don't know when, maybe 50 years from now. But we've heard a rumor there's a time capsule here now, but we're not really sure where it is, so we're working on that. If any of y'all know, let us, let us know. The foundation has stepped up to the plate in a couple of ways to become a part of the celebration. First of all, the foundation has put up the seed money to begin a pictorial history book. John Vandegrift, who is a local historian and a WCX, is writing the book as we speak. And it'll be kind of a, by the way, this is the McLennan Community College did a similar pictorial history book as well. They use the same company we're using, Donning, to produce that, and kind of a coffee table type book. John is writing that, and hopefully we'll have that ready for January, the opening event. And then the foundation has also agreed, they agreed two weeks ago, to launch a brick campaign. This is our Grogan Historic Plaza, right outside here, the academic building, and we have more than 600 bricks there at this time. And for $150, you can celebrate the 150th anniversary of our college by having your name or a loved one's name inscribed on a brick. You'll be hearing about that, with the proceeds going to help offset some of the costs of the celebration. So the foundation has really stepped up as well. We do have a website that's about to launch. It's actually already launched. We haven't put it out there in the public as of yet, but this is the front page. And Chelsea Cochran did a great job on our logo and also our website, very talented graphic designer that Katie works with. The web address is wc150.com. Talks about the history, all the different events. You can actually go to specific events. And we'll have a lot more details, the ability to buy tickets if necessary, et cetera. I'm excited about this memories page. People can go on this memories page, first of all, and they can enter in their memories of Weatherford College, share a memory. And then after we, you know, take a look at it, then we'll post those memories on this page. And then we're also going to have, you might recognize that lady, we're going to have a series of video testimonials from alumni, and we'll be bringing in alumni to interview them. There's a video studio that we've set up in the men's building that Katie and Chelsea have set up, and, you know, short little vignettes about the history of Weatherford College and their experiences with Weatherford College. You can buy a brick on here, you can buy a book, et cetera, et cetera. So we're very excited about that. WC150.com is where you can find that.
Will it be other social media? Will you have any kind of Facebook connection or Instagram?
Absolutely. There'll be, there'll be all kinds of social media. As a matter of fact, we anticipate that social media will probably be the way that we communicate the most this particular, but it's all going to be through our college social media platforms, our existing social media platforms. You have any other questions? Okay, we'll be ready in January of 2019. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Any, anything else? Well, let's go to announcements, and then we'll take a break, and we adjourn and go to closed session.
You guys, skip over here. In your board package, you see the upcoming events. It's starting to get very busy around here. We have a classical guitar recital. Will, our classical guitar instructor that many of y'all saw play in June, he'll be doing a recital, actually tomorrow night, 7:30, and he has a flautist playing with him tomorrow night, so. It's called Texana Duo. We're already in the middle of softball, baseball, and basketball, so you see all the games on there. Basketball teams, hopefully both headed to the regional tournament coming up in Lubbock at the beginning of March, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. We're going to adjourn at this time, and we'll go into closed session in just a little bit after we take a break, and we're going to reverse the order. We're going to take Tasby first, if that's okay with the board. And one of the reasons we would take Tasby first is so they can get on the road after the meeting is over. And the closed session will be to deliberate real property in accordance with Government Code 551072, and to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee in accordance with Government Code 551074. So at this time, we'll adjourn, and we'll reopen in about five minutes, if that's okay. Thank you. Okay, it's 5 o'clock, and we're opening, going back into the open session, and the next item on the agenda would be consideration, possible action concerning the approval of leadership qualification and the characteristics of presidential search as edited. Is there a motion that those qualifications and characteristics as edited would be approved?
I have some, yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. We've got an item on the agenda that involves consideration, possible action of the acquisition of the Granberry ISD property, but we're not going to move into that. We did have some good discussion on that, and we, we still want to make sure that everybody understands there's a contract that's supposed to come back our way that Mr. Curley will be looking at in the appropriate time that it gets here, and that's still under consideration. We value our friendship and our relationship with, with Granberry ISD and all the things that they do to help Weatherford College and our program down there with their program, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to deal with that property that they've offered us under the conditions that they have made. Anybody have a comment on that? If not, we'll go to item agenda number 12, which is adjourn. Is there a motion that we adjourn? Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, say aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.